Okay, Mayor.
I call a meeting to order at the Board of Aldermen for the City of Warrenton for February 5, 2013. Would everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Alderman Kendall, here he is.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is proclamation in recognition of Carol Deekman and a resolution from the City of Warrenton. Would the, Frank, would you want to come forward and your family or however you want to do it? And we have something we want to give.
Whereas Sergeant Carol Sue Deekman began her career with the City of Warrenton on September 1, 1990, and faithfully served the citizens of Warrenton as dispatcher, police officer, and sergeant. And whereas Carol Sue Deekman over ten years was known for her dedication to the students and staff at Warren County Earth Three School District and Holy Rosary School for her work as a school resource officer and dare officer. And whereas Sergeant Carol Sue Deekman has shown dedication and commitment by volunteering her time serving on the board for Turning Point for ten years and is a Red Cross volunteer instructor for over 5,000 people. And whereas Carol Sue Deekman will always be remembered for her tireless dedication to family, friends, and strangers, always putting others before herself, as exemplified by Sergeant Deekman throughout her life. And therefore, I am Mayor Jerry Dyer of the City of Warrenton now call upon all citizens to recognize and honor Sergeant Carol Sue Deekman and hereby proclaim that she be officially recognized for her commendable service to the city. Thank you. On behalf of the city.
And this one's from the Missouri House Representatives, Frank. Whereas the members of the Missouri House Representatives truly beset and by the death of Carol S. Deekman on October 20, 2012, at the age of 57. And whereas the daughter of Robbie Herman and Ethel Mae Dawkins of St. Louis, Carol Deekman was born on September 22, 1955, and served for 20 years as a dispatcher, police officer, and sergeant for the Warrenton Police Department, and for 10 years as a school resource officer and dare officer in Warren County and Holy Rosary Schools. And whereas Carol Deekman served on the board for Turning Point for 10 years, five of which were as chairperson, provided a safe home for foster children for 10 years, and taught CPR to more than 5,000 people during 600 classes as a Red Cross volunteer instructor. And whereas Carol Deekman was honored by American Legion Post 122 with its Outstanding Service to the Community Award, and by the Warrenton Area Chamber of Commerce through its Emergency Service Person of the Year Award. And whereas preceded in death by her parents and her brother Herman Richie Dawkins, Carol Deekman is survived by her husband Carol Frank Deekman, children Carla and Brian Hillkey, Carlin Liebrich, Danielle and Kurt Plough, Frank Deekman II, and Neil and Lindsay Deekman, ten grandchildren, siblings, Albert and Heather Dawkins, Kenneth and Jean Dawkins, Pilda Mae Roseman and Helen and Dawkins, and a host of other relatives. And whereas the late Carol Deekman was noted for her tireless dedication to family, friends, and strangers, and for always putting others before herself. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Missouri House Representatives, 96th General Assembly, join unanimously to memorialize the life and work of Carol Deekman and to convey this legislative body's most heartfelt condolences to her family members, colleagues, friends, and neighbors who now miss her considerable strength, warmth, and light in their daily lives. And be it further resolved that the chief and the clerk of the Missouri House Representatives be instructed to prepare a properly described copy of this resolution in memory of Carol S. Deekman of Warrenton, Missouri. It was offered by Bart Corman.
I'm at item number three on the agenda. Open an executive session minutes from January 15, 2013. Are there any corrections or concerns on the minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the open and executive session minutes from January 15, 2013. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dyer.
Yes.
Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Alderman Tallow.
Yes.
Alderman Kendall.
Yes.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item 3B, regular board minutes from January 15, 2013. Any corrections or additions or concerns?
Make a motion to approve regular board minutes from January 15, 2013.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dyer to approve the regular board minutes from January 15, 2013. Roll call, please. Aldi.
Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Alderman Tallow.
Yes.
Alderman Kendall.
Yes.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Alderman Dyer.
Yes.
Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item four on the agenda, hearing from the public. At this time, we invite anybody in the audience that like, would like to address the board to come forward at this time and state your name, keeping your remarks to five minutes or less, and courteous and polite. So if anybody would like to address the board, please come forward at this time. Hearing no one from the public, then I'll extend that same courtesy to board members. If there's anything you'd like to do to the public, please do so at this time. Not hearing anything from the board, I'll extend that same courtesy to the mayor. It's hard for the mayor to be quiet. He always has something to talk about. I just want to share one bit of information with the board. Couple of weeks ago, Terry and Michelle and I had an opportunity to meet with Steve Vecher from Boonslick Regional Planning. Steve asked if we could take a few minutes and do a little brainstorming with him. He had three topics that he shared with us. Most of the brainstorming was Steve's brain cells and not ours. We were just good patrons and listened well and were courteous to him. One thing he brought up to us and asked us to think about was a water storage system. This was a big project. He talked about the drought situation may be around for several years, and we may continue to have water issues. And he suggested we think about looking at a huge lake reservoir, something that would be a destination for the City of Warrenton, maybe a recreational type lake, as well as a storage for our future water needs. If you're going to dream, you might as well dream big, and that was certainly something to think about. The other thing we talked about and kicked around a little bit, which I thought was very possible and doable, he suggested we look at maybe doing a partnership with a sheltered workshop and the recycling center for the county out on South 47 in the City of Warrenton, a way to form a partnership and take care of our recycling needs for the entire city. Might be a possibility of us eliminating the charge for recycling altogether, or even reducing our charge for recycling. So I was interested in that. I thought that's something we need to gather more information on, maybe have some work sessions and bring everybody to the table and discuss that a little farther. The third thing he talked about was forming a countywide tax, sales tax for transportation. And that's another dreaming big situation, but if you could get everyone to buy into that, all the little municipalities like Martha'sville and Tree Lower and Wright City and Warrenton, everybody in the county, and then everyone would have access to tackle much bigger projects than what we're able to do now as individuals. Very interesting meeting. We all left scratching our heads thinking, could we do some of this or all of this? But anyway, very informative meeting, so. And that's all I have. I'm ready to move on to item seven, approval to hire Ariel Slinter as temporary building department staff at $11 an hour. Does anybody want to comment on that? Terry, any?
I certainly can. Ariel has come in to help us during the absence of a couple of staff members down there, has worked out very well and allowed us to continue operations fairly normally during that absence. So has been actually very beneficial to us.
We were able to get her on short notice and she was
One day's notice.
Available and doing a good job, from what I hear.
Doing well.
Any concerns or questions?
This would be a temporary?
Yes.
And is it part-time?
She has been working full-time hours at this point. One of those staff members came back today.
Okay.
So we'll need to assess the length of time that she'll be back, but we will adjust those hours as much as we can, but still keep the department running.
Is it the $11 an hour not a benefits?
No benefits, no, purely just $11 an hour.
And is that going to fit within the budgeted, the allocated budget?
It will not. We will need to make a budget amendment at some point, once this is finished and we know exactly how many dollars that we're talking about. But I believe we'll be able to allocate dollars from the recreation department line item of the budget, because we had that director's position open for quite some time. So there should be adequate funds there to move those around and reallocate.
I'll entertain a motion. If there's any other concerns or questions.
I'll make a motion, we approve approval to hire Ariel Slinter as temporary building department staff, $11 an hour, starting date of January 17, 2013.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Tallow to approve the hiring of Ariel Slinter as temporary building department staff at $11 an hour, starting date January 17, 2013. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Alderman Tallow.
Yes.
Alderman Kendall.
Yes.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Alderman Dyer.
Yes.
Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. On item number eight, ordinance approving petition for creation of a TDD. Mr. Peyton, you want to come forward and address that issue?
Okay.
I know somebody's going to have questions for Josh. And what we have before us is an ordinance to create a taxing, a transportation taxing district. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, I'll just start off by stating, my name's Josh Peyton. Been working with the City as special counsel to get to this point. And the ordinance, which is now actually bill number 05-13, is an ordinance to approve the filing of a petition to form a transportation development district.
Anyone have any questions for Josh?
Again, change since we had met as far as when we first discussed this, is there any other thing that we need to know about?
There really hasn't been any change. The scope of the project has remained the same and is based on what the work that the city has undertaken previously, you know, to get to this point. And there's been federal application and approval for, you know, that's kind of the impetus of where we are now. So, you know, we've had some conversations on this, and this is just the documentation to move forward.
This is the first step in meeting a revenue source for cost share for transportation improvements, correct?
Yes. The cost share program requires the local applicant to provide a funding source for their portion of the project. And this ordinance and petition is the means through which the Transportation Development District can be created. And ultimately, a funding force, excuse me, a funding source would then be available for potential use when cost share grant funds are available.
My question to you, and maybe you can answer this, but if we start, if this is all approved and we get all of our death order, and we start collecting this tax money, what happens to that tax money if, for some reason, MoDOT says, "We're not going to fund that program. We changed our mind." What, where does that money go?
I wouldn't anticipate the timing. I'm pausing to make sure that I provide the proper context. The implementation of the sales tax would be controlled by the Transportation Development And so it's not an either-or type situation where you have the sales tax and then you are stuck with it, even if, you know, you don't have cost share grant funds. This has been set up to where there's discretion so that it is a tool to be used to facilitate the acquisition of cost share funds to complete, you know, the entirety of the project. So to the extent that there are no cost share funds ever available to the city for the project, there would be discretion to stop any imposition or collection of sales tax revenues and, you know, kind of wrap up the Transportation Development District at that time.
And maybe correctly, if what I'm hearing you say, that this would be coordinated with the MoDOT people, and if there was some issue that that wasn't going to be funded, we wouldn't start collecting that revenue? I mean, is that what you're telling me, that usually those coordinate together, what, once it's approved, we start collecting funds then?
Well, there would be some discretion, you know, as to when the actual imposition of the sales tax occurs. And the number one factor for a cost share, for a successful cost share application is having a source of funds available. So getting up to the place where the resolution imposing the sales tax would be where ideally you would be when the cost share funds are approved. And then upon the approval, then the sales tax implementation and collection could then proceed.
Okay, I understand.
So this gives us the ability to communicate with MoDOT or the cost share source. Upon approval of that cost share, we have our ducks in a row. We have our funding mechanism in place, even though it may not be generating those funds, even though the sales tax may not have been imposed yet, we have the ability, upon approval of a cost share, to raise our portion of the funds.
I think you're exactly correct, and I'll just kind of restate it, is that you're sending a message that we've got everything that we need to do in line to provide the funds for our share. And, you know, it gives the best possible story to MoDOT and those parties to, yeah, here's a project that's ready to go, and they have their funding in place and ready to proceed. So you have the best possible application and the best chance for success.
Fantastic.
Any other questions for Mr. Peyton? Anything else, Josh, that we need to know?
No, I do not believe so.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. And we're going to deal with those bills later on in the program, so we'll ask those to be converted at that time. Director of Operations, Finance Officer Terry Thorne.
My first item for you this evening is a request from the Tourism Commission. They met on January 22 and entertained a request from the Chamber of Commerce for a total of $1,800. This was a request to provide two skins for the two billboards on each end of town to advertise the Festival of Fun, which is to be the celebration of the Chamber's anniversary. They've got a number of events that are slated for that. The Tourism Commission recommended approval of the $1,800 and desire to reallocate funds from their Catch the Glow line item in their budget that was previously there.
Do you have any idea how long we have access to those billboards?
We actually have the billboards all year.
All year long.
Tourism pays for those billboards all year long.
Okay.
And we alternate different messages on the boards, depending upon what the events are that are scheduled in the city.
I see.
The reallocation of those funds from the, I understand taking what was going to be spent on skins for Catch the Glow, if, when the city decided not to become involved or continue to be involved with Catch the Glow, it was encouraged that WDA or some other entity pick up that ball and run with it. If somebody picks up that ball and runs with it, are we now eliminating funding for them to advertise their event?
They have used a portion of what originally was in that Catch the Glow line item, but even after this allocation, there would still be a little over $9,000 in that line item. So if someone else would schedule some other summer event and want to utilize those, they still would have funds there that they could choose to use for that purpose.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or concerns? If not, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Cornell to approve the Tourism Commission's recommendation of $800 for the two skins for the billboard advertising for the Festival of Fun. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tallow.
Yes.
Alderman Kendall.
Yes.
Alderman Clark.
I have one question. What was the amount that the mayor said?
Eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred. Yes.
Alderman Dyer.
Yes.
Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
My next item for you is the request to add some language to our existing sick leave policy. This is at the recommendation of Keith Henson, who is legal counsel related to our insurance company. He recommended that we add language, which you see here under item C, that explains that for employees with less than 10 years of continuous employment, there is upon termination no ability to be paid for earned and unused sick days. That's never been something we've done, but the language started out on D, talking about if you were here more than 10 years, so it kind of skipped that language, that if you weren't here, you got, did not get that. And he just recommended that we add that to clarify this policy. So what we've added is item C, which states that if, you know, employees with less than 10 years, there is no pay for any sick leave that is accumulated. Nothing else on this policy changes, other than to add item C.
Do you need a motion to approve that change?
Yes, please.
I'm reading some more. Concerns?
Would this start with our employees already hired, or would this start after all the new hires?
This is all employees, this is the current policy that's in effect. It doesn't change anything from what we currently have, other than to clarify the language. So it's not changing any current benefits whatsoever.
Well, I understand that it's not changing what we view the benefits as being, but if the need is there to change the verbiage in this, could an employee that fits into this category make a claim that they're entitled to that? That's, it would seem like somebody could claim, hey, you're changing the, you're changing the rules in the middle of the game.
Whether or not there would be some type of vested rights, I don't think would be applicable in this situation or the policy changes as it's worded. Keith made the recommendation, based on a review of our policy, the insurance counsel. I spoke with him about it. I looked into it, and I just don't think this is the type of thing that creates a vested interest or vested right. It doesn't change, it's not a change to retirement or change, it's a policy change that would be applicable. Now, that's the legal perspective. Whether or not they feel that there would be some type of change, you know, that would be a question you'd have to ask the employees.
And obviously, I think that if it's been recommended that we make this change, and it seems like we should make this change, I guess, there's no reason not to make the change, but I'm wondering if that is something that we could, could see upon termination of an employee that they now feel like they're obligated and, or were obligated to compensate them, so.
I mean, from a legal perspective, I don't think they would have any claim under that. But, you know, I think it's like anything, when we change the policy, we really never know until we experience it.
Right, right, right.
So, but I think it's a good point, and it's something that I'm sure Terry can talk to about with the department heads, you know, whether they think there's going to be any feelings that way about it.
We can certainly discuss it.
Any other concerns? I think I've got a motion on the floor, but I don't have a second.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tallow, seconded by Alderman Cornell to approve the sick leave policy update. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? Motion carried six zero.
My next item for you is a request to approve the proposal that you had in your packet from Brick Kicker Inspection Services. We currently find ourselves in a situation with our building commissioner out, and the need on certain situations to bring in someone with some levels of certification to do inspections. Staff has done a great job, Jack and Brad and Guy, trying to fill in in the interim, and they've done a lot of inspections successfully, and we're comfortable doing those. But there are some that they feel the need, that they need to have more, someone more professional with more experience to complete those and make sure that we are following the code. So my request to you is to approve the use of this Brick Kicker Inspection Services on an interim basis as the need is felt during the absence of our building commissioner.
Is it your belief that they will, where he talks about all the inspection service fees, is this primarily going to be for field inspections?
Yes.
You don't, as far as plan reviews and zoning issues, you don't plan on administrative assistance using their services?
The only thing that I could see as a possibility is if there was a plan submitted that between our staff they were uncomfortable with a final review of, then that's the only thing I can imagine that we would bring them in for. And we've not had the need to do that. It has been purely field inspection, but at least it's available to us if we should need it, and they did not feel comfortable doing it, but.
How many times have we used him?
We've used him twice.
Twice.
And a common question, where's the money coming from?
There are funds within the building department budget as a miscellaneous line item. Originally had been designed, I think, to help with some training and other type expenses. I don't anticipate us using this to create a large bill. So I think within the regular operating budget, we would have the ability to fund the use of this person.
Thank you.
You know, and my question is probably to Brad and Jack on this. I look at this guy's qualifications. I mean, he's got great qualifications. What kind of job does he do for us? Is he, is he very knowledgeable? Does he know what he's doing on those inspections? Or are we just buying his reputation here?
I think on the first two that I've walked with him, speaking for myself, I think he's extremely professional, looks everything over, and then explains in detail what items he sees that needs corrected. Do you think Brad?
Same way. I was just on one of them, the other one I wasn't able to go on. But the one that he was on, you know, he knows his stuff, he knows the codes, and he's, he's on top of it, so.
That's what we want to hear.
Have we spoken with any of the other cities that he's employed with?
I don't know that we have. Have we, Jack?
I have not.
We felt like we were just very fortunate to find someone in the area that we could call on the spur of the moment and say, we need you here to do an inspection tomorrow. There's not a lot of that in this local area that are certified inspectors.
You just need a verbal okay to continue?
If we could have a motion to approve using the services?
Make a motion to approve the usage of Brick Kicker Inspection Services for Building Inspection Services.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, second by Alderman Flake, to approve the use of Brick Kicker Inspection Services on an absentee basis. Can I add that to you?
Add so is I.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
And then my last item for you. I believe at your desk tonight, you had a copy of a letter that Melody has put together. She will be sending this out regarding the changes to the sign regulations to all of the candidates who have filed for the upcoming election. We're doing this in an attempt to make sure that everybody's aware of what the sign regulations are, since we recently had major changes to that, so that nobody's surprised by what those are. So I think the plan is Melody to send these out in the next couple of days.
Yes.
So information for all of you.
And it's good to have, because I've had a couple people ask me about, you know, what the changes are and so forth. So this is good. We have the update.
And that's all I have for you this evening.
Any other questions for Terry from the board? Then I'm going to move on to number 11, Grounds and Maintenance Director, Brad Boosick.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. First item is the items to be approved for sale from the Grounds and Maintenance Department. I think you all have a list at your desk. Those are two items that we would like to take care of getting sold.
Are these items going to be replaced, or have they been replaced?
The first one is off of a pool vacuum that has been out of service for three years. It's just a good Honda motor. You know, we have no use for it, doesn't fit anything that we need, so we thought we could sell it. And the Ford van has been replaced by a vehicle that the Public Works Department was getting rid of. We just took it. This van is one of the old charter vans that was bought years ago. Already had one transmission, and it's on the second one now, so it's time to go.
And they'll both be placed on gov deals, I'm assuming? You're going to sell on gov deals?
Gov deals, yes, sir.
Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Kendall, second by Alderman Tallow, to approve the sale of the Honda motor pool vacuum and the 94 Ford E250 van. Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yep.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Next item I have is the ball fields, or ran across the gentleman the other day when we were finishing up the electrical on the east side, and made me aware that there were some lights in Truesdale at Noel's old sports complex that she was, Ms. Noel was wanting to sell. And they're the same voltage, the 480 volt system that we have out on the east side that we're just installing, and said that the, they had them, she had them at a very reasonable price, and that I might want to look into it. So I talked to Terry, and she told me to, you know, go out and take a look at them. I wasn't sure what kind of condition they were in. The gentleman who took, there were actually three fields there. One of them, he took down to, I think it was St. Peters, down to the J.C.'s Park. They had bought one field from, put them up, you know, everything, all lights. So I think he had to replace one, one bulb, is what he had to do on all of them that he put in. And so I went out and took a look at them, talked to Terry, talked to Ms. Noel. And she was wanting $1,400 for them, and that's for the pole, 65-foot Class 1 pole, galvanized crossarms, and I think there are 12 poles and 51 lights is what it totals out to be. A lot of them have four on them, some have three, some have six. And they're, and they're set up for the outfield lighting, the way they came out. So talked to her a little bit more and called her back and told her we might be interested in them. And I asked her what her lowest price would be, and she said $1,200 a pole. And I'm just bringing this to you, you know, that we, might be something that for the east side, these would suit us, I think, you know, this would be a very easy, economical way to do it. The lights purchased new are $430. And the cheapest Class 1 pole that I could find, it was 65-foot, was $1,600. And that was not shit, that was not, no shipping included. That was just buying the pole.
This would not be installation, correct?
Installation is, I've already talked to our local power company. They're willing to haul them, install them, and set them for us.
For what kind of money?
No money.
That's my favorite price.
Those are wooden poles?
Yes, they are. They're the CCA, they're the green ones, green poles. They pull them out, they're all, all the poles are out laying on the ground. I mean, the other gentleman who took, who got the other field, that was part of the deal, that he would take the poles out, set them, lay them down. And there's, there's no rod on these poles at all. These are like, they were brought out.
What would be the life of a pole like that?
Well, the ones up at the Corey League are still standing there, and I'm 56-years-old, and they were there long before I was there, so.
I believe they were put in in 63.
I don't remember that.
Before your time.
A little bit. Brad, is there a way that before we invest $34,000?
$1,400.
Yeah, 14, is there a way that we could hire an electrician to come out and test those lights to make sure? My concern is.
Now, the only problem is that's 480, and we, there's no, no way to do it.
What kind of concessions do you believe she would be? Well, it's a great buy if they work, if they don't. And my concern is, those have been on the ground for quite some time.
Actually, they were just taken down not too long ago. They were just pulled within the last, I guess, last summer, they were pulled. They had been up the whole time, and when they came and took the other ones down.
Well, it seems like longer since I've noticed them laying in the, in the fields there. Is there any kind of concession that she would make if we, if we install them and we have an issue with them? I mean, I know when you.
That was pretty much her bottom dollar, because she, you know, looked at the pole price of the pole and the price of the lights. She said, you know, you're getting the lights for free, and you're getting the pole at a discount. She knows what the poles are worth. I guess she knew when they put them up, that was quite a bit more expensive than that.
I guess my question is, you know, I think it's a great price, probably a good deal. I guess I'm questioning our need. So do we have a need to have that field lit on the east side? Is that, maybe I need to ask Dottie this, or, I mean, are we going to be having night games there, or what do you think?
I think certainly there's the potential to have night games there. Our, those fields are smaller, so it would be our younger age groups, which is where the bulk of our teams have traditionally been, from the stuff that I've seen. I think the other benefit is, having lighted fields there would allow during tournament times, we possibly could have teams over there warming up and doing other things there. I definitely think there's a benefit to it.
Where would the funds come from? Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
I knew you were. Where's the money coming from?
Actually, I, we, I think we saved, and Gabe's probably going to shoot me. I think there was about $18,000 that I saved on the east side of electrical by doing quite a bit of ourself. And that's what we were thinking. I still have one bill out for the final hooking up, just in between the transformer to the breaker. But it's just going to be his time. We paid for all the material. So that's, that's where we were, thought the money would come from. Now, this would just be having them installed and put in, and next year, we would budget to hook them up and install the wiring and the conduit and stuff to them, because we're talking another, probably another 15, 25,000 to get the lights hooked up and going.
So what you're asking for here, just the purchase of them?
Just to purchase the poles and have them up and ready to go.
So next year, then we budget in for the wiring?
Yes. Wiring conduit and the switches and the panel box to actually operate them.
Okay.
Brad, if we purchase them, haul them, had them set, are they going to go bad if we don't hook them up next?
No.
I guess if we, if it truly is a good value, even if we don't need them right now, if the fund is there, I can see the value in buying them, even if we don't have an immediate, an immediate need.
And that's kind of what my, when I was talking to Terry about it, about, you know, this opportunity. I mean, you know, it's one of those things that this is, you know, I think a really good deal for the, you know, for the, for the city to come in on something this, you know.
Is it something that she needs an answer before the next meeting, or is this something?
No, I think she's, no, she's, I think she can, as long as she knows that we're looking at it, I think she'll, she'll hold it for that long, long.
So we could maybe devour two on this a little bit?
Sure.
Any other questions or concerns?
No, I think, I think, thinking about it a little bit, and then Terry and Brad could get together where the funds are coming from, for sure, how they're going to be, if, where and how they would be coming, what they would be coming from, what item.
Okay.
I think it sounds like a good deal, but I'm kind of curious where the money is coming from.
You'll find with that. I think the board consensus is that we'll table and bring back this at the next meeting and let us digest it and go from there. Hopefully, the poles will still be there.
Is it possible, in the meantime, to kind of, I know, again, it's, there probably is a million different places to price used lights, but kind of get some kind of documentation to show that we're not taking a bath on these used, I mean, you've obviously recognized them as a deal. Some way to substantiate that and document that it is a value?
Yeah, I believe Brad actually did look at some things on eBay.
Okay.
To try to compare some prices, but we weren't comparing.
Apples.
Apples. Well, the ones on eBay didn't have poles.
Uh huh.
And I think he's confirmed that the pole's worth $1,600 or somewhere in that neighborhood.
Right, yeah, we've got a list, I think I've got.
He has done some.
Right, and I understand, but if he, and over the next couple of weeks, if he can put something together, so that if we decide to vote on it, we can at least have some documentation showing the value there.
Sure.
Thanks, Brad.
Next item I have is the approval to apply for the forest relief for the tree trees.
Oh, it's in the packet I was waiting for.
Trees are trees?
Yes, they are. Tree forest relief is part of the Conservation Department trees. They start them from seedlings, raise them up to three-gallon or a little bit bigger trees. And then they give us a list of what they have and how many, and then cities can apply for them, and we'll go down and get them. We've got, is that our third year, I think, we've applied for, second year?
Second or third.
Second or third year that we applied for them and received them, so.
And where do you plant them at?
We've been kind of redoing some in Binkley, the cemetery, Dyer Park, Corey League. We kind of, kind of spread them out all over the place.
I noticed out at the cemetery, you know, a lot of trees have been taken down. I was wondering, are we replacing those?
Yes, we have been replacing some there, and then, you know, kind of here and there where we, you know, we can't get really too up at the cemetery, because a lot of them, we have to keep the aisles open and stuff, and there's really not too many places. So we've been kind of doing on the fringe in the middle of the drives and what have you. They're kind of replacing those as they go bad. So we're trying to put them wherever we can.
So there's actually no dollar cost to the city?
No, just me running down to get them.
Get, just the fuel and me and Parker bring them and plant them.
Yep.
Any questions, any other concerns?
Free is good.
Free is good. Do I make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Tallow, second by Alderman Kendall, authorizing the Grounds and Maintenance Department to participate in forest relief of Missouri. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion carried, six zero. Any other, Brad?
That's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm on item number 12, Public Works Director, Guy Givers.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. First item I have is the approval to replace the Second Street water line from Vassil to Johannesburg.
And the net amount is how much?
The total amount is $12,296.69. So it was budgeted for $12,300.
All right, and I'm somewhat confused. Is that total amount, is that for phase one, two, three?
That's the total of all three phases together.
All three phases.
And I put it in phases, so we can, we don't have to supply the material on hand. We'll do the first phase, order the first phase, get that in, and then do the next phase, and then the third phase.
You say you budgeted $12,300?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
When do you plan on starting on those, Guy?
Tomorrow.
I'll make a motion, we approve the.
That's a good, good answer.
Request for the Second Street water line from Volshal to Johnabur project in the amount of $12,296.69.
Second, because if we don't, the guys won't have anything to do.
Right. Motion made by Alderman Kendall, second by Alderman Cornell, to approve the Second Street water line from Voschel to John River project in the amount of twelve thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixty-nine cents. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dryer.
Yes.
Alderman Flank.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Alderman Tallo.
Yes.
Alderman Kendall.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Motion carried, six zero.
Next item is phase one, and Schulte Supply came in at low bid for that. Approval of that.
Is this the, or I might have my favorites messed up?
Are these the included?
Go on that page.
Do you need individual? Motion individually?
For each phase. Because each phase is different companies that were low bid.
But they're all on this thing?
But that was the whole project.
Okay, so we should have addressed them.
And it also included rock and stuff on there.
So I'm confused, that twelve thousand did not include Schulte's bid?
It did. What it encompassed was the whole, the whole project, which is the concrete, the rock, and all of that, and then the phase one, phase two, and phase three low bids.
Okay, all right, so we need individual.
So did he put the clerk before the board?
No.
I think.
I make a motion that we approve the bid for Schulte Supply in the amount of four thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, second by Alderman Cornell, to approve the Schulte bid for the water line, Second Street, from Voschel to Johannesburg in the amount of four thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents. Roll call.
Alderman Flank.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Alderman Tallo.
Yes.
Alderman Kendall.
Yes.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Alderman Dryer.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the water line, Second Street, from Voschel to John River to HD Waterworks Supply in the amount of two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, second by Alderman Cornell, to approve the water line, Second Street, from Voschel to Johannesburg in the low bid of HD Waterworks Supply, two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Alderman Tallo.
Yes.
Alderman Kendall.
Yes.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Alderman Dryer.
Yes.
Alderman Flank.
Yes.
Motion carried, six zero.
Make a motion to approve the water line, Second Street, from Voschel to John River to Schulte Supply in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and five cents.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, second by Alderman Cornell, to approve the water line, Second Street, from Voschel to Johannesburg to Schulte Supply Company in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and five cents. Roll call.
Alderman Tallo.
Yes.
Alderman Kendall.
Yes.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Alderman Dryer.
Yes.
Alderman Flank.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Motion carried, six zero.
Next item I have is Water Street Lift Station. And we need a check valve and a ball valve. And I had, I called four people, and this is an emergency, and I had two respond, and the bid came in at five thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
So this isn't a budgeted item?
No, it'll come out of our pumps. I don't waste water.
This was a breakdown situation?
Breakdown of a check valve that did damage to our pump.
A little expensive.
Guys, expensive.
Bandit, really, their problem is.
Yeah.
I see that.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And this needs to be fixed right away. We have other issues that we need to address, but this needs to be done.
This is just the tip of the iceberg.
That's correct. But this needs to be done now.
You know, I'm going to point out that when Brad came, he had used equipment at a bargain and some free trees, and, guy, every time you're sitting there, it's more and more.
It's new stuff.
It's new stuff, and it's expensive stuff. I make a motion to approve the purchase of repair equipment from the pump shop in the amount of five thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars for the Water Street Lift Station repairs.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, second by Alderman Flank, to approve the low bid from the pump shop in the amount of five thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kendall.
Yes.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Alderman Dryer.
Yes.
Alderman Flank.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Alderman Tallo.
Yes.
Motion carried, six zero. What else you got, Guy?
That's it for now.
That's it? You're happy?
No, he ended that for now.
That's the scary part. All right, I'm on item eleven, Planning and Zoning Director, Jack Hamp.
Good evening again, Mayor and Board. I received an administrative site plan approval request for property located at twenty-six oh seven North Highway forty-seven for a proposed J and S trading post. And in processing that request, just checking for the sidewalks required, and right now, the nearest existing sidewalk along the west side of Highway forty-seven is approximately one point two miles south at the Aldis Grocery Store site. And there is no existing sidewalk along the west side of Highway forty-seven north of this site within the city limits, so the applicant is requesting if they can pay into the sidewalk fund, and they understand that they would need, sidewalk easement would be required if you approve allowing them to pay into the sidewalk fund.
I did drive out there, this is the old west side flooring building.
Is that the one it is?
North of Fairland.
Yeah, and Joe and Susan Hillsman are here tonight, if you have questions for them specific.
Forty-seven's a dangerous highway. There's no shoulders, no sidewalks. I feel sorry for people that walk along there. That's really a dangerous road, but I don't think forty-four foot of sidewalk's going to help much.
Well, there are certain areas in there where the topography of the land is not suitable for sidewalks.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not sure that side, more I'm telling you, this can't be done.
And maybe at such time forty-seven, it would get widened and some shoulders put on there. So we can look at that, so.
You all have, I'm sorry, the owners or the, you all have been made aware of the approximate or the cost of what the amount paid into the fund would be? Okay. Do we have a total of that?
Well, right now, that's existing, they've got gravel all the way across for the seventy-five feet. So if we would go with the six inch all the way across, it would be two thousand, sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. If we would go with just a six inch across their thirty-four foot wide entrance and let them go to four inch for the rest of their parcel, it would be seventeen hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty cents.
What has been, what standard?
Well, across the entrance, it would have to be the six inch.
Six inch, correct.
And the rest could be four.
Okay, and that would be consistent with what?
With everything else in town, yes, sir.
How much motion, do we accept that offer, the sidewalk fund?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Tallo, second by Alderman Kendall, to approve paying into the sidewalk fund on the property at two-six-oh-seven North Highway forty-seven.
And for clarification, would it be just the thirty-four foot section at your entrance, at six inch, and the rest are four?
I wondered about that on your motion.
I'm not, I guess I'm not following what the options are here. They need six inch across there?
At the entrance.
At the entrance.
And then the remainder of the property, four inch.
Four inch.
That would be a total of seventeen hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty cents.
Seventeen seventy-five fifty?
Yes, sir.
The options is hand over and put it in?
Yeah.
Or waive it.
But you wanted. I don't think that it would be consistent to waive it.
Excuse me?
I don't, it wouldn't be consistent with what we've normally done to give a waiver.
Saying what the options.
And they're not requesting a waiver.
No.
Are we clear on what we're moving on?
I was, yeah.
With the amount of seventeen hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty cents, is that it? Okay, now it's for roll call, vote.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Alderman Dryer.
Yes.
Alderman Flank.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Alderman Tallo.
Yes.
Alderman Kendall.
Yes.
Motion carried, six zero.
Thanks for opening your business a warrant.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Jack.
You're welcome, thank you, guys.
What else you got, Jack, any names?
That's it, sir.
I'm with item fourteen, Economic Development Director, Michelle Sinter.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. The first thing I have for you tonight is the economic development report from two thousand and twelve.
You know, for a down, for a down economy, we added a few businesses, didn't we? Didn't do too bad.
Michelle goes to a lot of meetings, because I see her there all the time. I know she's on the job a lot of the time.
If there's no questions or comments with that, I can move on to the next item, which is a change order for Highway forty-seven lighting project, and it is a negative change order. So that's a real good thing. It's a negative change order in the amount of one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety cents.
We're getting back money.
We're getting back money.
Can you tell me why?
They did not use all of the equipment that they thought they would need, since they were able to do it in smaller phases. They didn't need to use all of, like, the channelizer drums, flag assembly, construction signs, and different items that they had anticipated needing with the project.
So they're refunding the nineteen seventy?
This will come off of what they would bill us, their last bill.
We have to approve that refund.
Disapprove. That's a pleasant surprise.
So if I can get approval for Mayor to sign that change order, we'll get that submitted.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, second by Alderman Tallo, to approve the change order from Reinhold Electric. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Motion through.
I think Michelle just took the lead. Money back tops Brad's free trees.
They can rattle bed now.
The last thing I have for you this evening is a meeting on a countywide transportation funding. You should all have that in your packet. Steve Etcher sent that out, and he invited the mayor, Board of Aldermen, commissioners from the county, Terusdale, elected officials from Warren County to this meeting, and they have set a date of February twenty-first, and it'll be at seven P.M. at Kingsland Regional Planning Commission Office. Bless you.
Thank you.
Think that will be an interesting meeting, to see what the other communities, with their approach to it. Looking forward to that.
Hopefully, we can get a good turnout on our end.
I guess you're going to need to know, or you're just going to, you need to know who's going to be in attendance?
I'll be there.
As to whether or not to post it?
Michelle, I'll be there.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll be there.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
It's a notice melody.
It's a song.
You'll be there with that one?
And that is all I have for you this evening.
Michelle, I can, I, you've talked it up very good. I can hear you tonight, thank you. I'm at item fifteen, Recreational Director, Dottie Miller.
Good evening. The first item that I have on the agenda is, just for your information, I have scheduled a winter warm-up type tournament for girls' basketball, and in the process of marketing that, we have three teams between the different divisions, so we still have a lot of, a lot of room to get some more teams. Advertising it on U triple S.A. websites, N.S.A. websites, and working pretty closely with the directors of those organizations. Mailed it to about three hundred contacts last week, and there's going to be an email that goes out through U triple S.A., either this evening or in the morning, to another six hundred contacts, so we're really hoping that we can get this tournament going.
Hopefully, the weather will cooperate.
Yes, and it's.
Pretty risky at that time of year.
It is. But at that time of year, they're itching to get outside, and I think it's a pretty common thing anymore to have tournaments this early, so.
And you shared with me before the meeting, some of these, some or all of these teams that have already committed are coming from Illinois?
Yes, the three teams that we have committed so far are from the Illinois side of the river.
Maybe we aren't too far out to get some teams.
Yeah.
Good.
Thanks, Don.
The second item that I have is the new sponsorship package that we've put together. What you have in your packet is just the agreement page, which shows the different levels of sponsorship. We actually put together a nice color packet to take out to some of the people that we actually want to talk to, to try to get it in some of these higher level sponsor levels. To date, we have confirmed six of the youth team uniform sponsors. Possible, still working on one thousand dollar sponsorship, and then two of the three thousand dollar sponsorship. So we've got some leads out there, just trying to make those things happen, so.
Have you spoke with Tony Hoffman, Central Link?
Um, I, he, I don't know if that's.
Because I know he's, they've, company sponsors the last few years, I know.
Mm-hmm. I don't remember the name, but yes, I have had.
Okay, well, that's your lead to contact.
Okay, what was it again?
Tony Hoffman. I'll get his number to you if you need it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The third item that I have is the ADA pool compliance report. Brad and I met last month with an inclusion coordinator who specializes in kind of evaluating facilities and programs and stuff like that, to make sure that public facilities are compliant. There are quite a few different issues at the pool that need to be addressed. It isn't uncommon to have those kind of issues at a pool that is the age of our pool, I believe. Brad told me it's twenty-nine years old, or something like that, I don't remember. But anyway, so that isn't all that uncommon. But the thing to remember about ADA is that it's complaint-driven, so we do want to try to do everything we can to get it to where it is compliant, but some of the issues are cost prohibitive. So we've created resolutions to each of the different areas. The big thing is you have to have two means of access to the big pool. Right now, we have steps that go down that actually do meet accessibility requirements for one of the access points. The second one is to install a pool lift, or, is that what it's called, Brad?
A chairlift, yes.
Chairlift, yeah, a chairlift, and that was budgeted, and so we will start working on bits for that item. So that's an easy fix. The baby pool, not such an easy fix. The baby pool is built quite a bit different than any baby pool that I've been familiar with. The good thing is we got really lucky, in that the wall that goes around it is actually sixteen inches wide. So we are able to put a transfer point on top of that wall, and it will cost about five hundred dollars, as opposed to major construction. So we have researched everything that we need to do there, and the inclusion coordinator did say that she felt that that would be a reasonable accommodation. The other things, the reception desk, and some of the minor repairs inside the facilities, comes up to be about sixty-four hundred dollars, which also Brad does have budgeted. And a lot of that stuff, he's been working with somebody to get some quotes on that, and then he's going to do some of it on his own. The two items that won't be addressed this year are the parking spaces, not having enough handicap spaces, and then the entrance ramp. The entrance ramp has a six point nine percent grade. percent grade, and it should not exceed five percent. So, that's a pretty significant area of concern there, between the parking lot and the ramp. So, that'll be something that we'll be working on for next budget year.
How many more handicap spots are needed?
It's not really the, I think we might have to have one more. It's the location of them.
Oh.
Because where it is built now, the whole front of the pool is not compliant with the slope, so we actually have to go all the way down past the playground equipment to get the suitable slope, and then we have to change the sidewalk with the slope of the sidewalk is wrong because it's not compliant. Going up into the pool is not compliant. Inside the pool is not compliant, so we've got a lot of changes we're gonna have to do. And that's the whole thing with, actually, where the car parks, the slope is too great. That's where we're at. So, that's why we're gonna have to go over and tear the parking lot out and start over and redo, and there's gonna be some thought put into what we're gonna do then.
Thank you.
I don't know if this is best directed to Dottie or to Brad. Your cost estimates, I'm assuming that is materials. That's not including staff labor?
Some of it is. We've kind of lumped it together with the showers, taking the showers out because all the showers are gonna have to be jackhammered out. Floor is gonna have to be reported because the slope is wrong on that. We will do some of that. Some of the plumbing will have to be done by plumber to extend the drains, and then if, you know, provided we don't hit anything when we're jackhammering through the floor, which is a very good possibility. The other is the sinks in the bathrooms. Those will have to, plumber, we'll take the old ones out. Plumber will have to install the new handicap sinks and the faucets and everything for that. And then the stools, we're gonna lose a stool in each side, men and women's, because the handicap stall is not, when it was built, they didn't, it wasn't in compliance with the ADA, so we're gonna lose one of those. Have to bring the stalls all the way out, so we're gonna lose one stool in each side. So, that's just some of where we're getting in to do, so.
And is your intent, these areas to address, still this spring before?
We have to do them before spring, before we can open.
There was actually a, some sort of legislation passed that this stuff had to be, public pools had to be compliant by January first, or, yeah, January first of two thousand thirteen. So, we had until May, because we don't, you know, we're seasonal. We don't open until then. So, we had a little bit more time. But some of these do need to be addressed prior to opening.
Any other questions?
The next item that I have is the athletic complex use agreement form. Just a little bit of history. When I first started, there wasn't really any sort of, there'd just, you know, there'd been an effort just to get people out there, so there wasn't anything similar to this to really, that had really established fees or explained what we were gonna do versus the renter. So, put this together. It also includes pricing. On the second page, there's a fee schedule. I checked around with lots of other, Bridgeton, O'Fallon, three or four different places to make sure that we were close to where they were, definitely not more than, since we know everybody thinks we're too far out here. And I actually have talked to three different individuals who may be interested in running some tournaments out here, and they said that this is a great price, so I think that they're satisfied with what we're offering. Basically, if somebody wanted to run a tournament on all four fields all day long, it would cost them seven hundred dollars without any add-ons, such as resetting the field or field dry or anything like that, just your basic setup and lights.
I'm naive to the world of athletic tournaments. Is that the most common practices for a third party to run the tournament as opposed to the city of Warrenton to run the tournament?
Yes, I think that it is in most of these places. At Wapplehorse and St. Charles, at B Mac and Bridgeton, Kirkwood, even in Columbia, they have, there's a lot of small businesses that popped up where these people are running. That's what they're doing for a living, is running tournaments or using indoor facilities and such. It is much more , we will benefit much more from doing the fields, running concessions, getting the profit off of the concessions area, you know, having very few staff there for the actual tournament as opposed to having the staff at ourselves, not to mention all of the work that it takes. I can tell you this one tournament that we've done, I've spent a considerable amount of time on it, which is fine because we're trying to get some exposure, but there's no way that we could try to run tournaments, you know, all year with the number of staff that we have. So, definitely for us, I think that this is the best approach.
Makes sense. I just never thought of it in that. You need, you don't need any action on that?
The last item that I have is, would like to discuss the possibility of a shared usage agreement with the Warren County Youth School District. And I actually did invite Craig Fraser, who's the athletic director from the school, to be here in case you guys had questions that he might be able to answer. But one of the things, when I was interviewed and started working, that I found very early on was there was a desire to try to expand the programs and activities that we're offering. So, how are we gonna, how are we gonna do that? And obviously, we have outdoor space, but we need indoor space to do so. So, for me, the most logical thing to do was to look at the place that had the most facilities, and obviously, the school district does. So, I contacted Craig, or maybe he contacted me at the same time because they were looking for something as well, and we got together and talked about the possibilities of doing some sort of a shared usage. The school has a need for an additional baseball field for their freshman teams, so they are interested in Corey Park Field One from the end of February through the end of May, so basically, the school baseball season. They would construct a mound on it, and they would be responsible for all of the maintenance for their usage. In return, we would have the ability to use their gymnasiums, multipurpose rooms, art rooms, different facilities that we may be able to do to start doing some other recreational activities. One of the concerns that was brought up was that, what impact would it have on our youth baseball program if we did not have Corey Park One available? I did do a little research. I went through the practices that were scheduled from last year, all the schedules from last year. There were, you know, maybe a handful of practices that occurred at Corey Park, starting at either five or five-thirty. So, yes, there may be some interference with a handful of what happened last year. Now, that could increase each year if we have more and more teams, or we just simply move back the time that people are allowed to start practice in hour leagues. But we also don't want to upset people, so we sent out a short survey asking coaches about their practice preferences, where they want to practice, stuff like that. Of the twenty-four coaches that we sent stuff to, we only got four replies. Three of the four replies said that they prefer to practice at Corey Park, and the practice times were anywhere from five o'clock to six o'clock, six-thirty, stuff like that. So, I think that the biggest consideration on our end that we need to look at is, how is it gonna impact our current baseball, softball program, and then the possibility of other programs in the future?
How late, Craig, how late in the day would you all need, how late would we have to push back the Corey League usage of that?
Our practices would normally go from after school, three o'clock, to about five, five-thirty. Game days would be the ones that would be the issues because games start at four-fifteen and usually run until dark. Now, with the use of a field that we might be able to use lights on, we'd probably still start our games there, but there might be the possibility of a doubleheader or something along those lines.
And that schedule is set way in advance?
Our schedule is already set, yes. And we've also, we are hosting the freshman tournament for the conference this year as well, too. So, looking for an opportunity to have two fields in use at the same time, instead of trying to do on one field at the high school where we can only get one game in on a day and having to use another high school's, you know, field during that, for that week of the tournament is another reason that we were interested in using the field.
What, Dottie, what do you think the impact is? I mean, there's always gonna be a downside also. Certainly, there's gonna be people that are inconvenienced, but...
Well, the disadvantage I have right now is I don't really know the dynamics of the people we have coaching for us and how everything works together. Until I've been through it for a season, I'm having to rely pretty heavily on Terry to, and, you know, other people who have seen how things are working, to give me that information. And so, I think I probably need to, I don't know how to really answer that.
The only knowledge that I have related to practices and those concerns have just been the concerns that were voiced the last couple of years by different coaches, and just concerns that we've heard in general about having fields available, be it for practices of our own youth league or others who wanted to use practice fields in town. And I know there has been generated a lot of discussion in the last couple of years. I don't have enough immediate knowledge of this time of day, whether that's going to be an issue, or the fact that, you know, certain weeks that they wouldn't be available. I simply don't have enough knowledge to know what that particular impact would be. I do believe that with the availability of the use of our fields at the complex for practices, that that certainly offsets some of the issue that we would have with losing this field at Corey Park.
Craig, did you say how late your guys would practice?
Practice usually would be done around five, five-thirty on practice days. It'd be game days that we would run later.
Oh.
Game days. And that's, if you're talking one to two nights a week, that we would have games on that field at the most, as I see it.
I have for, the year that I've been on the board and even before that, preached about the need for a facility sharing agreement to facilitate basketball leagues or volleyball leagues or art classes that, using the community resources. So, I would be in favor of doing anything possible to make this arrangement work. It works for the school, it works for us, and I would like to see that made possible.
I agree.
My question to Craig in the school would be, by us, by the city letting you all use Corey Park, is there a possibility that the citizens would have access to the school ballparks if you all weren't using them, let's say, after five-thirty? Could some of those Low League teams practice on the school park?
Probably not on our big field, but that upper field at the high school, that's usually, we like to have, know who's on our fields, and that there's always a facility usage. All of our facilities are open to any organization that is the majority of Warren County residents. If it's a youth baseball team and they want to use our facilities, they're welcome to free of charge. We have three levels of usage for our facilities. If it's benefiting students of Warrenton or Warren County, then they're gonna be able to use those for free, as long as they have certain insurance, and they fill out the proper request. So, that's the thing. Yes, they would be able to use that field. We tend not to let the big field be used, except Legion Ball does get to use it during the summer time. So, that's, because it's one of the few, one of the few, Sherwood Baseball, I think it's the only one that is. I don't know how big all the fields up at the complex north of town are. So, I mean, it's harder. The fields there are set for high school baseball.
Yeah, the other thing I'm hearing from Dottie, I think there would be a pitcher's mound that would be on Corey Park year-round?
Just for the season.
Oh, just for the season?
Yeah, it is. If you guys could throw some dirt on there for us, our baseball coaches will build the mound. They build the mound on our field right now, because we have to take it down for the softball season. So, our baseball coaches just, we ask for a pile of dirt to be put out there, and they'll build it right before the season goes. So, if we could have a pile of dirt there, they'll build the mound there. And we asked if there would be a permanent mound for that field instead of a portable mound. I know you have portable mounds up here, there was. I asked our coaches, it's just not the same playing on a portable mound than it is a permanent mound.
As far as the dirt mound being there after they're done, we could leave it there. They were, we had discussed that they would just knock it down afterwards because we may not be using it. But if we need to leave it there, we can leave it there.
Yeah, you guys leave it there. All it really takes is a bobcat to go.
Right.
Ten seconds. It's gone.
I think what I'm hearing from the board is that they want to participate in a shared agreement with the school district. Am I correct on that? Is anybody in agreement on that?
Do we need a motion for that?
I think so.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Cornell to enter into a shared facility agreement with the Warren County Art Research Department. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion carried six zero.
And so, Mayor, what you would like us to do is have our city attorney and someone from the school work on?
Absolutely.
An agreement to bring back for approval to this body?
I think that's a good idea. What else you got?
That is all that I have.
That's it? All right. Thank you, Dottie. I'm ready for Finance Manager, Gabrielle Curry.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. My first item on the agenda is the accounts payable. The total amount of invoices for the month is two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and twenty-five cents, and that is what I'm asking for, if we will.
Anybody have any questions or concerns on the accounts payable? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Dyer to approve accounts payable in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and twenty-five cents. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
The next item I have is a request to transfer funds for portion of the grounds and maintenance building cost. It was suggested by the auditor that we might want to think about allocating part of the building cost from general fund, since the grounds and maintenance department does more than maintain the parks. So, based on prior expenses and the number of hours that the grounds and maintenance folks work on parks and work on their other functions, we determined that twelve percent is the appropriate amount to transfer. So, we are requesting to transfer from the general fund to the capital sales tax fund, twenty-six thousand, nine dollars.
This is, this is the Butler Building. Let me see if I'm reading this right. This is on the purchase of the Butler Building. The state auditor says, you know, we're sharing usage there amongst different departments. Am I following you right on that?
When we were having discussions, she had just suggested that maybe since it's being used for more than just parks, I mean, we might wanna think about allocating part of the funds from a different fund other than paying one-hundred percent from the capital sales. So we have, um, funds available from contingency that we could reallocate for this, based on your approval.
Anybody have any questions, or are you still scratching your head?
I'd make a motion to approve transfer of twenty-six thousand and nine dollars from...
Why I just got stuck?
From the grounds and maintenance.
It's not from grounds and maintenance, it's from-
From the general fund.
From the general fund. To capital sales.
There we go.
Good thing I can read lips.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Flank to approve the transfer of twenty-six thousand and nine dollars. From where? Melody, from where, man? From general fund to the capital?
To the capital sales fund.
Sales fund, alright.
Let's just take the ding off.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. What else you got, Gabby?
That's all I have, thank you.
Don't bring those big figures in here anymore, I just confuse everybody.
Melanie, it's up to you.
The only item I have for you is the two-thousand-and-twelve annual report from the office of the city clerk, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
I think you averaged about eight meetings a month, don't you?
Did it?
Whoever said it was two meetings a month lied.
Yeah. They didn't tell the truth.
Looks like it was a busy year.
Yes, it was.
Anybody have any questions about the annual report, Melanie?
Looks good.
Been busy. I'm ready to, uh, move into item eighteen, bills to ordinances, and the first bill we have is bill number oh-three dash thirteen.
Call for the first reading of bill number zero-three dash thirteen.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Tallow for first reading of bill number oh-three dash thirteen.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement between Inland Potable Services Incorporated and the City of Warren, Missouri for diving services for potable water tanks, reservoirs.
Call for second and final reading and passage of bill number zero-three dash thirteen.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flank, who was that you? Seconded by Alderman Cornell for second and final reading and passage of bill number oh-three dash thirteen.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement between Inland Potable Services Incorporated and the City of Warren, Missouri for diving services for potable water tanks, reservoirs.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Bill, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Call for the first reading of bill number zero-four dash thirteen, sorry, Mayor.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Clark for first reading of bill oh-four dash thirteen.
An ordinance amending section four-zero-five, point four-zero-zero of the municipal code of the City of Warren, Missouri pertaining to fees.
Call for second and final reading and passage of bill number zero-four dash thirteen.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flank, seconded by Alderman Dryer for second and final reading and passage of bill oh-four dash thirteen.
An ordinance amending section four-zero-five, point four-zero-zero of the municipal code of the City of Warren, Missouri pertaining to fees.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
No.
Motion carried five-one. You're just checking me out, weren't you? I'm ready for bill number oh-five dash thirteen.
Call for the reading of bill number zero-five dash thirteen.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alder- Alderman Tallow for first reading of bill oh-five dash thirteen.
An ordinance approving a petition for the creation of the Warren Interchange Transportation Development District, authorizing the filing of petition in the circuit court of Warren County, Missouri, and authorizing certain other documents and actions and prescribing other related matters.
Call for second and final reading and passage of bill number zero-five dash thirteen.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flank, seconded by Alderman Dryer for second and final reading and approval of bill number oh-five dash thirteen.
An ordinance approving a petition for the creation of the Warren Interchange Transportation Development District, authorizing the filing of petition in the circuit court of Warren County, Missouri, and authorizing certain other documents and actions and prescribing other related matters.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. There'll be no other business on the agenda, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Tallow, seconded by Alderman Flank to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? We're adjourned.